And I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular board meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, January 22nd, 2024. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Gents.
Here.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
And Ms. Jane.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Rising, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have three board salutes. Mr. Carubus.
Thank you. The Illinois Music Association All-State Festival and Music Education Conference. The board salutes the sixty district two oh four high school student musicians who were selected by the Illinois Music Education Association to perform at this weekend's All-State Musical Festival in Peoria. Indian Prairie annually places at the top of school districts statewide in the number of student musicians selected for this conference. This year, district two oh four has students participating in the all-state choir, orchestra, band, jazz band, and composition track. Congratulations to all involved.
Ms. Gents.
Nequa Valley School Resource Officer involved in life-saving rescue. The board salutes Nequa Valley School Resource Officer Mark Schumacher for his heroic actions during a recent water rescue. Schumacher, along with two other Naperville police officers, saved two adults and a toddler when their car crashed into a retention pond near the Naperville Ninety-Fifth Street Public Library. Officer Schumacher's bravery and quick thinking helped save the lives of the family trapped in their vehicle and ensured the safety of all involved. Thank you, Officer Schumacher, for your service to the community.
Mr. Rising.
And before I read mine, I think Patrick's here. Patrick, do you want to just stand up? Nequa Valley freshman achieves rank of Eagle Scout. The board salutes Nequa Valley freshman Patrick Reynolds for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest advanced rank in scouting. Patrick constructed six community planter boxes at Grace Community Christian Church for his Eagle Scout service project. Congratulations to Patrick on achieving this prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. And actually, Patrick, if you could come up, we'd love to take a picture with you.
This evening, our student report is from Nequa Valley, and Kaylee McGee. We're pleased to welcome you.
Hello and good evening. I hope you all enjoyed the holiday season. I'm excited to share the upcoming events in Nequa Valley that take place during our second semester. Starting off strong, course selections are underway. Freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are already choosing their classes for the 2024-2025 school year. Events to welcome the class of 2028 have begun. Last Wednesday night, Nequa hosted eighth-grade open house, where both students and parents came to learn more about the plethora of courses offered at Nequa Valley. The activity hub is still bustling. There are over seventeen clubs meeting every week and over one hundred students checking in for their club meetings during this time. Next week is Wellness Week at Nequa Valley, and there are lots of events planned. The sophomore class has arranged a club collaboration with You Matter, our student mental health club, in order to beat these third-quarter slumps. February is our Student Performance Month. We have the Orchuses Showcase, the Variety Show, the Multicultural Show, the World Music Show, and Mr. NVHS. Come over to Nequa Valley at any time and watch these stellar performances. Looking forward, the juniors are preparing to take the SAT and ISA science test. Winter sports are entering their conference and state end-of-season events. In March and April, there are a lot of student recognition events, such as Nequa Honors. Overall, Nequa is just returning to our routine after break, settling in, and getting ready for fourth quarter. I hope you all have a great evening. Go Wildcats.
Thank you, Kaylee. Do we have any board? Do we have any public comments? Bear with us just a second, please. Public, it's now time for public comment. Sixty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, we ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comments represent the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board and member, from board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know where the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. We have one speaker this evening, and it is Alicia Smith.
Hello. My name is Alicia Smith. I attended school at Gregory Middle School. I'm a Pioneer, Wabonzi Valley Warrior. I taught in the district for thirteen years at Kendall and at Georgetown. I am a resident of the district. I reside in the Gomber neighborhood, and my niece and nephews attend Gomber Elementary School. Indian Prairie School District two oh four states that they are committed to equity. The district also states that they are committed to safety for all students, but your actions prove otherwise. The district's policy is that students who live less than one point miles from their school are not eligible for busing transportation. In practice, this is not occurring. The district picks and chooses who they grant busing to. There are neighborhoods that are less than one point five miles that the district chooses to bus and other neighborhoods whom they deny busing. The district states that they use the IDOT Serious Safety Hazard Rating in order to determine busing eligibility. The rating looks at information such as if students have to walk alongside a busy street or cross a busy intersection to decide if their route is safe. I requested the rating for both the Georgetown and McCarty neighborhoods walk to Wabonzi. I was informed that neither neighborhood had ratings because they are considered a walkable neighborhood since they are less than one point five miles from Wabonzi. Yet, they walk alongside Ogden and/or Eola. The Georgetown neighborhood has to cross the busiest Walker intersection in the district, yet their walk has not been reviewed for safety since they started walking to Wabonzi. That was over thirty years ago. I have been in the district for more than thirty years. Ogden and Eola have undergone major changes: connecting Eola, numerous Eola and Ogden expansions, the Ogden Bridge. Yet even though those roads have changed drastically in the last thirty years, district two oh four has never reevaluated its safety in all those years. It is assumed to be safe just because they are less than one point five miles. So then I asked for the rating of Oakhurst, that is north of Wabonzi Lake and south of McCoy. Most of that neighborhood is less than one point five miles to Wabonzi, yet they receive busing. There must be a safety rating that justifies their need for a bus, even though they do not have to walk alongside any major roads or cross any major intersections. There is no rating. They receive busing without evidence to support that busing is necessary. These safety inequity discrepancies do not only exist for Wabonzi, they also exist for Nequa, Fisher, and Gregory. Yet the district does not intend to finish assessing these safety inequities for several years, until 2028. Why is the district picking and choosing which neighborhoods receive busing and which ones get to be safe? It is not equitable or safe. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We'll start with the superintendent report. Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Demming, members of the Board of Education and Indian Prairie community. I need to start my comments with sad news. Leo Cantano, a sixth grader at Fisher Middle School, passed away on Saturday, December thirtieth. Leo first attended Prairie Preschool and then Gomber Elementary School. Leo had two siblings in the district, a sister at Gomber and a brother at Young. Additionally, Henry Vincent, a fourth grader at Cloud Elementary School, passed away on Tuesday, January sixteenth. Vincent was a scout and was in his second year in our district. May Leo's and Henry's families know that we are saddened by the news and send our support to all of them. I ask that we take a moment of silence in honor of Leo and Henry. Thank you. Earlier this year, I was able to share with you that we had received additional funding from our mental health, for our mental health clinics for the next two years. However, at that time, I was not able to share our funding source. I am now able to tell you that we were funded through a competitive grant through Endeavor Health, which is formerly Edward Elmhurst. For the first year of our clinics, we were given a grant by Edward Elmhurst. We applied again, and Edward Elmhurst, now known as Endeavor Health, saw the power of our program and how, and has now funded us for the next two years. This means that the mental health clinics we have in place at Granger, Longwood, Fisher, and Georgetown will be able to serve our children for the next two years. I, Lee, cannot thank Endeavor Health for their faith in our program. We have, as a district, been able to secure more than $2.6 million in competitive grants to support mental health and wellness since the pandemic. I would like to take a few moments to thank some people for all that they have done to get our schools ready when we have had snow and other weather-related issues. In the last couple of weeks, our building service staff through Aramark has been at our school in the early morning hours and over the weekend to make sure our sidewalks were clear, the boilers were working, and that the schools are ready to receive students and staff. Additionally, Monday landscaping was out early in the morning and late at night plowing our parking lots. I remember driving by Matia at four fifteen the other day, seeing the, seeing Monday out there plowing the parking lots. I want to thank our teams at First Students, who have made our, make sure our buses were working during the cold. Organic Life needed to be, needs to be thanked, too, for making sure their trucks were working to carry the food to the schools. Coming in early, they're normal, to make sure all buses and trucks were turning over and starting. All of the work of these people was invaluable for us. Without their attention to detail, our schools would not be ready for the students and the staff. They would not have been ready for, on Saturday, after the snow on Friday, for basketball games and other community events. I applaud John Robinson and his facility team and Ron Johnson for his team. Thanks to all of you. I am aware that JR will be having his people out to salt the parking lots, the sidewalks, tonight if necessary, in order to take care of any ice that may be falling. Finally, I want to remind our families that we have a limit of five days of e-learning we can do a year. This year, we have used one, and one day must be used for the primary day in March, which means we have three days left. Once we go over those three days, we have to add days to the end of the school year, something we are trying not to do. Hence the reasons we are very careful about our decisions when we make each day for e-learning. Now, at this time, I'd like the Board of Ed to approve the appointment of Mr. Ryan Van Kampen for as an Assistant Principal of Wabonzi Valley, starting July one, 2024. Mr. Van Kampen will be replacing Mr. Bibbs, who is retiring. I don't know if we can ever replace Mr. Bibbs, but I know Ryan will do a fantastic job. Ryan currently serves as the Director of Professional School Counselors at Wabonzi Valley. He's also served as the Professional School Counselor before he was made Director in 2016. We listen well in his new role. Ms. Demming.
I need a motion to approve Mr. Ryan Van Kampen as Assistant Principal at Wabonzi Valley High School, as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Ryan Van Kampen as the Assistant Principal at Wabonzi Valley High School, as presented.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
And Ms. Jane.
Yes.
I will just say tonight, when I saw him come in, he said, "We have a lot to do, and I look forward to all the work that I get to do there." So we're just very happy to have you onboard.
Ryan, you have a support staff there? Do you want to stand up and introduce some of your people? And where do I get some of this wardrobe?
All right. No, I think Jason Sipp has taught me the importance of dressing the part for Wabonzi and representing your school colors, so. So I'm, I'm very grateful for a lot of the people in this room and a lot of people in this district that have given me opportunities to lead to this role. I promise not to let you down and go after the hard work that's in front of us at Wabonzi and District two oh four. But I also want to acknowledge my wife, Katie. I wouldn't be able to do any of the work that I do here at Wabonzi without her support of my professional development and of our family, so. Thank you, Katie, for allowing me to do the work that I do at Wabonzi.
Thank you, Mark, for letting me also congratulate. I, I know Ryan as well, and I'd love to see the support from the administrative staff at Wabonzi, so thank you. Next, we move to our consent agenda items. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through P.
This is Allison Fosdick. I am with the Board to approve consent agenda items D through P, as presented.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
And Mr. Rising.
Yes.
We now move to our consent agenda items for separate consideration. I need a motion and second to approve the independent contractor agreement for African-American unity, I'm sorry, for African-American men of unity completely funded from the Title I grant, as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the independent contractor agreement for African-American men of unity completely funded from the Title I grant, as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes, thank you. I asked that this item be pulled from consent agenda item. And so I wanted to, my goal is to get some consensus from the board on what the district or administration should do about kind of extracurricular opportunities across the district at different schools. So this is a great program. I'm going to vote to support it. We did it last year. I want to continue to do it. It's providing college and career readiness activities and mentoring for students as well as family engagement opportunities. And that's, that's awesome. The limiting factor is it all, that's only happening at a certain number of schools. And there's a reason for that, because of the grant. So we received, we applied for, we received grant, and we're applying it to a certain number of schools. But then I inquire, queried further about what's happening in other schools. And then I kind of reviewed our board policies. We have two, six colon one seventy, and it says, "All district schools shall provide services that, taken as a whole, are substantially comparable." And then we have another policy, seven colon ten, that talks about equal opportunity and extracurricular opportunities. So equal extracurricular opportunities shall be provided for all students. It doesn't mean the same. Each school can have, you know, different populations. It can have different needs, but they should have similar opportunities. So I'm looking for consensus from the board that we direct administration, the district, to kind of do a, a catalog so that we can know what is happening at each of the schools, so that we can know that we are following our policy, so that we can know that there is equal educational opportunities and substantially comparable services at each of the schools. So, great program, you know, support it, but are we doing it at other schools? Do we need to do it at other schools? Is there something else we could be doing at other schools that we might already be doing and we, and we don't know? So in the grand scheme of things, this isn't a large sum, but it prompted further inquiry on, like, how can we do a little bit better with it? That's it.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to hear Dr. Tally's thoughts on that and have him get, give us some background and thoughts regarding this and kind of the points that Justin brings up.
So several things that come to mind with regards to what was said and asked. First of all, policy six point one seven zero deals with Title I programs. It was written originally to address Title I schools, mainly focused on the standpoint of staffing in Title I schools, curriculum, to ensure that those Title I schools have everything that non-Title I schools are having. The history of Title I in the United States is that Title I schools at one point in time received the least experienced teachers. Sometimes in some districts, they would not even receive the same curriculum. And so this was to ensure that this was happening across, and this is what General Counsel has informed me about this policy. With regards to programs in our buildings, I, as a, for example, Gomber has a, a program that it has in place, a mentoring program, that was created by the principal of that school working with a local church. It is not uncommon for a principal to work with their community, to establish programs in his or her building that are specific to that school, but you will not necessarily find them at other schools. We are aware of programs where we spend district money, and for example, our robotics program, a program that's not in every one of our elementary schools. We know it's in most, but it's not in every one of our elementary schools. We also know where we spend our, our grant money. For example, we have Twenty-First Century Grant, which is only covered in two of our schools, Longwood and Georgetown. And so we know where our grant money is spent. However, it would be a process of finding out, school by school, all the other programs that they may have. And then I guess my question would be, what if we found out that a school or two schools had X program? And you want it, and you felt it needs to be in another school, but we, one, don't have the means, and, two, the company that's putting that there, put in by the PTA or what have you, is not willing to expand. So for example, we could have workers from the local Julosco who want to come in and do mentoring with children at a school. We could not force them to do that, and I know that's not what's being said. I'm just talking about if we were to gather that information, how does that benefit us going forward? Is it just a collection of information? To what end? Because are we saying that schools don't, shouldn't have the ability or don't have the ability to determine what they're going to have in place? And then are we saying that all schools should have them? So I think the, those are the questions that I would have in mind about the work that would be required of our principals and the assistant superintendents to gather this information on, on, and then what programs are we referencing? In particular, there are special ed programs that we have in place. So to define the programs as well as to determine what is happening out there for non-money-spent programs, I, I'm not certain I understand the rationale.
Any other discussion, question?
Yeah, I think, listen, I recognize that certain extracurricular or even sometimes programming isn't always equal from school to school. And one that just comes to mind, and not that there's, again, this is sometimes the decision of the departments at the individual high schools I'm talking about, but, you know, I know Wabonzi has a wonderful show choir. Well, other schools, I know Matia doesn't have something like that. Are there kids that probably want it? Yes, but it was a decision that's made by that school, and, you know, I understand that's how things go. Regarding these programs and, and one, working with this wonderful organization, the African-American Men of Unity Organization, you know, I, I know they have done some wonderful work within our schools. So then it, then, then it starts to bring up a thought in my mind. It's like, if this is a wonderful program at these schools, especially a mentoring program where we know could be needed at other schools, then, then do we start looking maybe a little broader? Like, could we, will we put this in some other schools? So, but again, I don't know how you draw the line on, on some of those things, but I, I just feel like a mentoring program, that could be good for so many people. I don't know.
You could actually find that for some schools, they may not need a mentoring program.
Yeah.
It all depends upon the school. What hasn't been said, and I, I don't want us to jump, I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse. I'm not hearing that we're saying that once we determine something, that we, we're going to put it in all schools. That's not what I heard. I want to be very careful that I'm not saying that, anyone is saying that. But I am saying each school is independent of what their needs are. Some schools might need a mentoring program, where other schools might not. It really depends upon what are the needs within that building versus saying that we need to have this program across all the schools. And, and hence where the principal, really working with their community, their PTA, they determine what are their needs and will determine what, what, what are the things that we need to have in this building. I, I speak only as a former principal with regard. I, I speak only as a former principal with regards to what I determined to be in my building. I, I was a Title I principal, and I had af, extra after-school academic programs to build the academic needs of my school.
And to me, the Title I, the Title I funds for those Title I programs are limited to Title I schools.
I wasn't using Title I money to make that happen. I had my community. I had, I had a mentoring program that came in, and I worked with a senior citizens group to bring that in. Whereas a school that was in another part of my county, they didn't need that.
Right.
Thank you. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
So let me clear-
Did we do the-
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm looking for some consensus from the board to give some direction to administration. And, you know, honestly, it could be, we don't have consensus. We want to punt or consider it further. We want the district to come back and, and, and consider some of these questions and get back to us and make a presentation. This just sparked some questions that I have. Are we providing equal extracurricular opportunities across all of our schools? Are we providing substantially comparable services across our schools? And I recognize that each school has some degree of independence, but it's also part of the district. And I recognize eat, there's different populations and different needs and different opportunities. But there's also, I think, some room here to grow and, and make it better. And I think we at least have to scratch the surface further. So, I'd like to hear from each of you on what, how you'd want to proceed with this. It's obviously a little above and beyond just this motion. But it's, I think, rela, relevant to a general consensus. It's not an agenda item. It's not a separate motion. Just this program sparked some additional questions that I had, so.
I would support collecting just information and data from schools about what programs they offer. Simply because awareness in and of itself helps us make better decisions. Not necessarily with an end for a decision to be made, but it gives us an awareness of what's actually happening in the district at the schools.
I agree. The more information we can, we can have, but I do also agree with what Dr. Tally said too. So, I think further discussion we, we can have, obviously, as we get that information as to what we would like to do.
Well, I, I think we need to, first we, we, we first need to recognize that this is going to take potentially significant staff time. You know, when, if, if Dr. Tally has the assistant superintendents talk to their principals, find out the programs they have, that's one thing. But then, how far are we taking it? Then are we saying, well, what programs would you like to have? And then are we saying, okay, well, here are some programs that currently exist. Do we need to look at these programs in other schools? I mean, we could, we could play this out to infinity.
I think we should just start, though, with that first step and not really commit to anything beyond that. I, I don't, I don't personally feel comfortable trying to set any other expectations beyond that first step. But, and I think as we collect that, then we can have a real discussion about where to go.
So much like we're, much like we're evaluating our curriculum across the board, then we could take a look at programs that currently exist across the board and maybe look at what next steps are after that.
Yep. Yeah. I agree.
Ms. Jane?
I don't know if I have a clear answer to this. I think it's an important question. I too, I'm trying to understand how we're defining it. Extracurricular activities have become increasingly more important over time for, to build the student, overall, their student experience. And I do hear in the community chatter and discussion about differences in, in trips of activities that are available in different buildings. I don't know if that's good or bad. I think it reflects, like Dr. Tally said, the community and the specific needs. However, um, I don't know if there's a way for us to define extracurriculars that might be, um, supported through building PTA programs versus district programming. Um, and for us to do maybe an inventory, let's say at one level, instead of trying to do it at all, all levels, maybe we start with elementary schools only, like, define the scope of that work to see what that looks like instead of trying to attack it all, since we have such a large district. And even with elementary, that's, that's quite a bit. Maybe we start, you know, certain grades within elementary that we're looking at. I, I think there, I think from a board perspective, it would just be interesting to see the variance in the opportunities our students get to experience district-wide beyond the school day. I think that's just an interesting data point that we can all speak to in terms of the breadth of experiences our students get to have. But after we get that information, I think Dr. Tally brings a good point. What are we going to do with that? And I think that requires another discussion. And, yeah, some more information to, to discuss that.
Dr. Tally, um, it, it appears that, um, there is a need or, or desire to have some further information. Is it possible for us to have the conversation with, um, our assistant superintendents to find out what would be feasible as far as assessing the information regarding different activities that occur at different schools? And again, there may be some wonderful things that happen, and the school may desire whether or not they have that capacity to do it, especially if it's something that's done at a school from the community, from the community level or, or PTA or something. But can we start with the assistant superintendents to ascertain what might be?
Well, I think, I, I think the, the, the question at hand is what programs do you want to, to know? We have to define the word programs. Are you speaking of after-school programs? Are you speaking of programs that happen during the school day? This is the, this is the devil in the details. That is, that's going to be required of, of you to say, what is it that you want so we're not chasing rabbits down the wrong hole?
Right.
And so, as a board, you're going to have to give me, and I can tell them-
Very specific.
What are the specific, what's the specific information you want us to gather?
Yeah.
Right now, it's program, and that's too broad of a term for us. And so,
That makes sense.
If, if that's a conversation you can have, maybe we can have with, I don't know, a couple of you to help define what it is that you're asking for, then that may, we can come back and say, what is it that will take us to, to get that information for you?
So let's do this. Why don't we take, um, the next week to determine, to receive, um, feedback regarding what is desired? And what's meant by programming? I don't know whether Mr. Carubis has a different-
Could it, could I just, uh, offer, could we get maybe categories of programming from you, Dr. Tally? On what, how, or is that even too big of a?
I, well, I, I, I think if we can determine maybe what it is that we're asking for, whether it's, do we want to have all curriculum programming, because all curriculum may not, but, I mean, that's, that's pretty far. Are we specifically just talking about after-school programming? If we can gather that information. Just as a point of clarification, this is an outside organization group. Yes. Okay. So, in my mind, that's what we're talking about, outside organizations coming in. I don't know if that's what Mr. Carubis intended.
That's not what I intended. But I mean, I, I think extracurricular has a definition. And asking us to define extracurricular is, I, I think we, as a board, need to make sure we are providing, you know, equal extracurricular opportunities across the district. That's our, that's our requirement. So any definition that limits extracurricular activity is going to not satisfy me that we're meeting the policy. So, if there is minutia, or one's athletic, one's before, one's after, we can get into that further, but we at least need to have a presentation, I think. Maybe an additional agenda item on, on this. And I don't mean to take the whole board meeting to discuss it for this motion, but it's, it's something that came up. You know, when I started on the school board, there was a lot of variance among the schools. High schools had different course catalogs, different classes at each. So we've made tremendous improvement. And now I think we're at the extracurricular level. So a lot of the stuff has, as, you know, we've benefited from, and, and now we're saying, "Curricula's good." Are, are we sure extracurricular's good? That's all I'm trying to say.
So, Mr. Carubis, you were asking for extracurricular. That's, that's specifically what, was that, is that what everyone else is asking for?
I'm still not clear what that is because is extracur, I, I'm more interested personally if it's extracurricular and if it's benefiting students in an academic way. If it's a Dungeons and Dragons club, I don't, I, I, I understand where Mr. Carubis is coming from, that, the, the, I understand where Mr. Carubis is coming from as far as equal opportunities across our schools. But again, that's something that chances are the students created, the students found an advisor or a sponsor, and they created a club. That can be done at the school level, not, not where I think our wheelhouse is. But if, if it's something that's related to academics and/or can benefit students in an academic way, I think that is more something we should at least have a purview of, and then we could, we could, we could take a look at that. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just talking out loud here.
So we, we have, we have a couple of different assessments of what extracurricular is and what's desired.
So taking that week like you suggested would probably be good.
So again, um, if we, I don't know, seven days enough to, maybe we, maybe we do fourteen days, two weeks from now. I don't have a calendar.
When we meet, is that, is that our next board meeting?
Our next board meeting.
To discuss and define, and then-
But I think what would be helpful is for, if each board member would submit, would share with all of us exactly what is desired by extracurricular. You just said extracurricular, ac, those programs that-
What it means to me, yeah.
What it means to you. Uh, Mr. Carubis has a, you know, each of us may have a different opinion.
And we're going to have to come up with a consensus so we can let administration know.
So if we can, if we can share that with each other, we'll start there. Um, and we'll go, let's go for two weeks to make sure that we have, um, all of our board members have the opportunity to share that information with everyone, since we have some that aren't here tonight. So let's begin there.
I was just curious if Victoria had any thoughts? Is that okay? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but did you have any thoughts regarding that? Regarding programs, or? Sorry, Susan. Oh, yeah.
I, I invited her to, and she said no, because she already had to sit by me once, so it's probably, I'm not going to do it again.
I'll be honest, I don't have many strong thoughts on this. But I did get an email today from our school about, um, the African American Parent Night for increasing, um, ex, awareness of extracurricular and resources for parents. And if I'm being honest, like, sometimes my mom will come to me and ask, you know, is this a way for, is this the correct way to target, um, parents and students and kind of isolate them in this manner? And sometimes I do feel conflicted on it also. I think that it's really great to have extracurricular resources, but I do think that sometimes, um, it is also great to encourage students to advocate for themselves. And I think putting those resources in too, and encouraging, you know, me being on the advisory board too, advocating for my own students, I think is a really great approach also. Obviously, from the district level, it's very necessary also. But I do think, it's kind of one of those things where, you know, you give student resources or teach them to seek them out for themselves, I think is, both are equally important.
Very good.
You can say right, you can say right there.
Oh, sorry.
If you'd like, if you'd like, if you'd like. So, do we have consensus that we will, that we will share, um, what we mean by extracurricular activity? You can, um, share that with the board, and then, um, we will move forward to determine where we move from there and, uh, talk with Superintendent Tally.
That sounds good.
All right. Michelle, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Gins?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
And Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the independent contractor agreement for African American men of unity completely funded by the SRT three grant as presented.
Second.
Oh, oh, he beat me to it.
Thank you. Second?
Yeah, Mark did second. I'll, I'll let Mr. Rising take that one.
I missed that. Thank you. Michelle?
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Gins?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carubis. We will now have a presentation from Ms. Joan Peterson, Dr. Charmaine Joiner, Ms. Lauren Gresher, Ms. Kylie Lukowski regarding elementary social studies curriculum resource adoption.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you for having us. We got you. Thank you, Dr. Tally, and members of the board for giving us the opportunity this evening. It's a very exciting one from the work that's been taking place at the elementary level for quite some time now. I'll begin with some introductions because we'll, uh, want to give it, the, um, the educators that are here with me today an opportunity to share with you about some of the, um, English Language Arts resource work that we've been doing that's directly aligned to our strategic plan priority one. So, Joan Peterson, Director of Elementary Core Curriculum.
Charmaine Joiner, the literacy coordinator. I have been in the district, um, coming up on my twentieth year.
Lauren Gresher, oh, sorry.
Lauren Gresher. I'm from Graham Elementary School. I'm a fourth grade teacher, and I've been in the district for sixteen years.
I'm Kylie Lukowski. I am a second grade teacher at Patterson Elementary, and this is my third year in the district, and I am a two oh four graduate.
She asked if she should say that. I said, yes, you should. So we have, um, three primary goals, uh, this evening, and it, it actually comes from, um, work that began twelve years ago at the, um, shifting to Common Core standards. Uh, English Language Arts was the first, uh, curricular area that we did work in to align to those standards. But we are now coming up on our, um, almost twelve-year anniversary to, uh, taking a look at what we're using to support our English Language Arts. Now, that does not mean that it's been static. We have certainly been, um, in, involved in, um, making refinements and, um, updates over those twelve years. But we are at a point now where we are looking, um, we formed a committee, and we were looking to do some work now circling back to this core content area after we have done in sequence, English Language Arts, then math, then science, and then social studies, which is, um, uh, in line with what we've shared with, what we were hoping to do with our five-year curricular plan as well. So we come to you this evening so that, um, I can do less of the talking, and you will hear from some of the experts certainly at the table. But we would like to make a recommendation that, um, the board consider the purchase of an English, English Language Arts core resource. With that consideration, potential approval at the February fifth board meeting to move forward with the purchase. And then that would ultimately mean that we would full-scale move forward with implementation for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, we'll share with you a little bit about the process that we have been through. It's been about a year and a half's worth of work that has gotten us to this point with the committee that's been assembled. And the, the, the real credit goes to the teachers in the buildings and their students who have done a lot of really hard work to give us the feedback that we need to be able to share with you tonight. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. Joyner.
So, we begin the committee, the pilot teachers. We had a total of forty teachers. We had a diverse group of teachers. We had all different years of experience. We had veteran teachers, we had new first-year teachers, and so on. It consisted of all the classroom teachers, so different grade levels. We had RI, which is our reading improvement teachers. We had our Project Arrow teachers, our ELL teachers, our LMC directors, as well as SPED. So, we basically had a huge variety of different people who were part of our initial pilot. So, as we moved on and we actually implemented the pilot, we actually expanded to eighty teachers who came on board with us. So, our process was, I'm sorry, am I too close? Okay. Our process was, we started with developing criteria. So, we brought those initial forty committee pilot teachers together, and we first wanted to just get on common ground. So, we looked at and discussed the criteria that we were looking for in search for our new ELL, ELA curriculum. So, that's kind of where we started with this. We made sure that everyone kind of just, as we had discussions and, you know, we went through all the different key points and things that we were looking for to make sure we were aligning with the standards and, and the, we wanted the criteria to match across grade levels. So, that's kind of where we started. Next, we took all that information, and we used that criteria to start to figure out how we could get through the process. I'm gonna look at my notes, too, to make sure I'm not leaving anything out. So, we compared the- We compared the common criteria that we all developed with our current curriculum and what we already had, and we wanted to see where we were going. So, we looked at where we had been, where we were, and where we wanted to go to kind of debug that criteria. After that, we did some research. We looked at all the different products from, just thinking about different school districts. We looked at certain things like ad reports. We did a lot of research to get to the point where we had nine products for the pilot teachers to look at. So, during that process, the teachers were able to come. We kind of made it like an exploration day. So, we had all the materials and resources that came over. They explored the materials. We compared it with the criteria that we had developed to make sure that everything was gonna align. And then after that, we kind of honed it in to our top four. So, once we got our top four, then we invited those vendors in so that the pilot teachers will have a chance to even further look at the different materials and resources and ask questions. And so, when it all kind of boiled down, Savvas My View, we discovered that it had both, all of the criteria that we were looking for across grade levels. And so, that's how we landed with them.
Thank you. So, as Dr. Joyner shared, after reviewing those four vendor materials and taking a look at Savvas My View, it was in alignment, we found, with all of those criteria that we had developed, at least from that initial glance. But what we needed to do next was definitely use it in our classroom. But it was in line with philosophically what we believe to be good for, for students in their development of literacy. It had connections between reading and writing. It had evidence-based and research-based practices, particularly in the foundational skills, which is in line with science of reading, as well as making sure that we're developing good word-level knowledge for students and then moving them onto comprehension. So, it included components there. We found that it was rooted in evidence-based and research-based testimonials and experts that contributed to the development of the product. Each unit has essential questions that guide the learning that will occur for students and give really clear outcomes for what we think we want students to be able to, be able to master through the delivery of instruction. It also focuses on like three separate tiers of making sure we're developing good literacy practices in the classroom. And that is, some of the instruction happening, whole group at a tier-one level, some small group where we can do more strategic and targeted instruction, and then also that independent piece, which is both, and they'll be able to speak to this, both supporting students in their individual growth, but also having students have an opportunity to really enjoy different kinds of text, see themselves in text. So, that was what we were able to see from it when we first got to know it. And this was last spring, when we had a first introduction. So, our pilot teachers, our eighty pilot teachers, were onboarded last spring to be able to then utilize it this fall. So, as, as we met this fall, we, we met throughout the fall with groups, both mixed-grade level groups, for instance, primary and intermediate separately, as well as individual grade levels. And throughout the process, we did really three things. We had experts from the publisher that were here on a regular basis, helping us get to know how to use this with fidelity and integrity. We listened genuinely to what the teachers were sharing as far as what they needed to learn next. Sometimes it was, there was, it's such a robust program that they just needed to know where to find things and then left exhaling, because they're like, "Oh, it was just two clicks away." But all of that takes time. So, we really did spend quite a bit of time this fall, both articulating among teachers and working with the experts who are, have helped to create the resource. And that's also a credit to our building principals for, I mean, this was a release, a release opportunity to be able to provide that professional development. So, teachers had to really get ready for subs, and principals had to make it work, and everybody kind of contributed, 'cause they felt like this was really the, the best work to do right now and what we need to do next with curriculum. So, what did we see? We saw that it really knocked it out of the park like we thought it would. It, it contained all of the things that it purported to contain, including one of the most critical pieces was our teachers shared that from kindergarten through fifth grade, they really want to have a clear scope and sequence of how the skills grow. And not only is one provided, but it produces. I mean, it's, it's actually built in. And then it also, we've heard from teachers, an affinity from some to have more digital opportunities, and some still really like some print opportunities. It included both. It has a robust assessment suite that provides real-time data. So, as we, as we, every time we met, we would also circle back and say, "Is this providing us what we said we wanted from our criteria?" Because we need, we need to always come back to that. Not like, "Do we just like the stories?" But is it really doing what we, as a committee, set out to say, "This is the right work to do to find a resource that's gonna best support kids and teachers." And so, as we come to you today, we have found success from our eighty pilot teachers. And, and I'm gonna let them maybe share a little bit about what actually has happened in their, in their own classrooms.
Good evening, and I just want to thank you all for listening to us tonight and giving us the opportunity to talk about this amazing program that we've had the opportunity to kind of pilot this year. So, as we all kind of, teachers at the forefront of our mind always have our students. And so, I would say the biggest thing that I have seen from this, this program is the deep and authentic conversations that our students are having. Today, you know, it was kind of this aha moment, "I'm speaking tonight, and we're having these wonderful conversations in my classroom today." And it just made me realize what, the program really has this great way of lending itself to these inquiry-based opportunities and learning. And students are asking questions and piggybacking off of others' questions, and we're searching on our computer, and we're, we're just having these really great conversations that students are, you know, today we're getting into diversity, and students are talking about Helen Keller, and we go over to our bookshelves, and we're picking books off, well, kids are grabbing them out of my hands. It's just one of these things that is so great to see the students' level of excitement and engagement. And I think that's the thing that I've seen the most through this program. And it, it revolves around the lifelong learner that we all hope that our students will be. So, that was the biggest thing that I want to start off and kind of say right away. Not only is it great for the inquiry-based part of it, but it's comprehensive. I know Joan had talked about how there's reading and guided reading and writing and grammar. It's like your one-stop shop for all of the things that teachers need in that curriculum that we kind of were, kind of going to different places for. And now, this is all just comprehensive, and it's in one place. So, teachers can really kind of focus on what's important, and that's the engagement of our students. It also, what I've loved is that it really aligns with our science and social studies curriculum. Me being a history enthusiast, I love history, and the students know if you, we mentioned history, Mrs. Gresher's gonna get sidetracked and off-topic. But my students, I think that bringing that into the conversations and having those deep conversations about difficult times in our history, and students have really enjoyed kind of doing kind of side research, and we've really had some time to look at primary sources and, but that has really been through the readings that we have been doing in this program and how it spans across different genres. So, you know, when we have historical fiction, or, you know, we even have poetry built in, it just kind of lends itself really nicely to all those different kinds of genres that students enjoy. And, and students maybe not, didn't even know they enjoyed until they started to read it. So, as far as the planning goes, you know, it's really nice to see kind of the build across grade levels, and I know Joan had talked about that. And I think what's nice is also different teachers in the buildings having access to these materials, because, you know, we are talking about our ELL teacher being able to front-load students vocabulary before they walk into our classrooms, so that they feel successful. And they feel good about when they're coming into a lesson already knowing the vocabulary. And our SPED teacher kind of, you know, piggybacking off of what we're teaching and kind of really hitting those skills also in their, in their independent time with those students. There's so many materials and a variety of assessments. It's robust. And, but we, we as teachers, we'd rather have more than less. So, we're still trying to figure out all those different amazing things that is included in the program. The assessments that we are being able to really put on the Savvas program for their students to go into and take the different assessments. What's nice as a teacher is that they grade them for us, and we are able to really dive deep into what students are lacking or what they're struggling with. And so, what's amazing is that they group them, and then they're able to provide us in the program with mini lessons to do. So, sometimes we take those mini lessons, and we do them in our guided reading groups. And it's, it's really nice, 'cause instead of teachers sitting there and grading it, when our time could be better spent really working one-on-one with those students and really looking at the data part of it. Where are these kids struggling, and where are they, you know, maybe skills are lacking, filling in those gaps? I think what's nice is that we have two teachers, I'm a sixteenth-year teacher, she's a third-year teacher. I think that it speaks to all of the teachers, this program, 'cause there is, you know, tangible, you know, books that some teachers really enjoy having in front of them. There's the digital aspect of it, where teachers can kind of get on, print something off, or pull it up on the, on their smartboard. So, I think it really speaks to kind of the different levels and comfort of technology that we have in our district. And so, I think I just want to end off with that it's really great to see not only students excited about learning, but also talking with colleagues and how we can better support our students with this program. Like today, I was, we're sitting at lunch, and I'm talking to my colleagues about this, this great conversation that we had with our students today. And she offers a mentor text that would be great for tomorrow. So, I think what's exciting is that not only students are excited about it, but teachers are excited about it. And I think more teachers are excited to, to jump on the pilot program with us.
Well, just to go off of what she said, the big, the biggest thing that I found success in My View is the relationship building, too. There is a huge SEL aspect in this curriculum. Just by, almost every single day in that reading lesson, it's a turn-and-talk. Talk to your neighbor, talk to your table, find a partner in the room. I think that has created such a healthy and open and willing-to-share environment in my classroom that is something I've never experienced before. My students are open to question one another in a respectful way. We talk about those respectful discussions and how to have those discussions with one another. I love the consistency that it has and it's given us. I think that something that I have struggled with in the past two years is filling in those gaps in some of the previous curriculum. And this has so much that it also gives us the opportunity to show our creative side and lets us have that ability to create something awesome with all of these ample resources. I am someone that loves to switch between a tech lesson and pen and paper, because I think it's awesome to have the hands-on opportunity. But we have so many learners that learn in all different ways. So, the fact that My View gives us all of these resources in all different manners, and they give you everything in a manipulative and a paper format, they also give it to you online. The reason I like to mention that is because I have a lot of ELL learners in my classroom, and having the ability to put the story on my Google Classroom and have them go back and reread and re-listen to the story and have someone listen, read it to them, but also have it right in front of them, too, where we did not have that in the past, has been really awesome to see. I have a student who has grown, based on his iReady data, has grown two grades, has gone up two grade levels since the fall. And I truly believe that's from the ELL aspect of this curriculum. It is in the Teaching Resources Guide and the Teaching Books. It has every week off to the side an ELL component for both the writing, the word study, and the reading comprehension. I also love how it is aligned to our social studies and science. Just last week, I had a student say, we were, we're currently on our Unit Three, which is Traditions, and I'm also teaching about early Americans and experiencing your history in social studies. And one of my students just shouts out, she was so excited. She was like, "Oh, my gosh, we're learning about this in, in reading, too." And so, just seeing the excitement on her face was just enough to inspire me. I think that it is gonna be easy to onboard a lot of new teachers, as well as to teach experienced teachers as well. I think that it gives you the opportunity to create whatever you, you can take it anywhere. But then also, it gives you that structure and that stability that like, oh, if I don't know what to do for this lesson, they provide you with those options as well. I just kind of want to leave it on this last point, that, because the data speaks for itself. My class average percentage growth for annual growth from fall, fall iReady data to the winter that we just took last week, my class grew eighty-eight point two percent.
She's like a My View commercial, isn't she? They both are, they both are. Well, we, thanks, guys, very much. We, we have eighty teachers that could share similar anecdotes. What we did find from the committee is that like any, any published resource, there are parts about it that we would like to change or tweak. That will be work moving forward. But comprehensively, we found that it was a match for what it is that we felt like we really needed based on the criteria that we developed. And then, moving forward, whether we're adding, adding a mentor text or tweaking a writing lesson, that will be the case with any resource. But we were thrilled. We also have been supported on the full journey by Savvas. They have been extremely responsive. They want to tailor what they can do to support us, not just a district of our size, but the different experiences, levels of teachers. In fact, David from Savvas is here tonight, even supporting us at a board meeting on a Monday night. So, where we, where we are right now is, as I mentioned with one of the first slides, our goal is to give consideration, and the materials are available for review, K-5 sample materials. Request approval potentially from the board at the February fifth meeting. What that would lead to would be on March first, an initial onboarding of a larger scale.
This would be about 400 of our teachers at this point, K five. But also including in that, we have already included our reading improvement to a certain extent. But special educators would be included, we have a planning to include EL so that everybody has a sense of what's happening in the Gen Ed core tier one curriculum in the classroom. So March first, that SIP day would primarily be all K five teachers being on boarded in an initial way. Materials then arriving over the summer. And then over the summer, providing some ongoing sessions optional for teachers that we would establish where they could come and just plan, get familiar with the materials, be with grade level colleagues and just kind of get their feet wet over the summer. Those would be, like I said, optional, but I I anticipate since that we would have a high degree of participation based on the energy behind what we've seen so far. And then moving forward with professional development, starting with our August Institute Day next year, making this a priority as well. And then we're going to, what we'll need to do is we'll need to have more experts at each building that can help to support their colleagues at all of their grade levels. So Savvas has, we have a meeting later this week with some of their expert professional development specialists in anticipation that should this be approved, that that professional development is going to be really important. We can have good stuff, but we need to be able to work with teachers and have them feel supported with new materials, have them feel heard if there's other supplemental things we need to consider. And then kind of walk alongside them as they as they embark on their first year, with the exception of our pilot teachers doing their second year. So we respectfully request consideration and are open to any questions from the board.
Mr. Carubis, thank you so much.
Of course.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Carubis. Let me begin with Victoria. Do you have any? Thank you, Mr. Carubis.
Thank you very much. I love hearing from subject matter experts on this stuff. And I love the enthusiasm I'm hearing all around. That's great. You saw us stubbing our toe on just defining extracurricular. And you guys are like thirty deep on this stuff. And so I'm not a teacher, I don't spend any time in the classroom. And so I I I love deferring to you on these matters when you guys are in the classroom, you guys are dealing with it day to day. And then I love the fact that you're presented in such a way that you're enthusiastic and passionate about it, so thank you for that. I have no questions on the material presented. You guys did great. I look forward to, I'm glad we update these. You know, we we need to keep looking at this. You know, obviously, not everything requires board approval because, you know, digital aspects keep changing so frequently. I, that's a larger issue in in the law that hasn't caught up with the classroom. So thank you for the presentation. I look forward to approving these materials at the at the next board meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fostick.
Thanks for the presentation. I'm so excited that so many teachers were involved in this. It's like Mr. Carubis said, you guys are the ones in the classroom. So the fact that you actually got to experience it and have such positive things to say is great. I appreciate the intentional cohesiveness about doing it across the district. All students can benefit from this. It sounds amazing. And I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Rising.
So my first question, first of all, thank you for the work and thank you for all the team members that were part of it. And thank you for the work you guys do every day with your students. So my first question is kind of a little more environmental of what's going on right now in literacy. And my first question is kind of two pronged. I'm hopeful that given all the people involved in this and as English teachers or as teachers that focus on all the chatter that's going on throughout the country on literacy, that you had a good representation of people that came into that working group that kind of have been paying attention to this all across the country. So I guess that's the first part of my first question. The second part, I briefly mentioned this to Joan when I walked in the meeting tonight, is I I was actually on a call today, a working group with with Dr. Sanders, the state superintendent, and his whole cabinet. And they are soon in January of 2024 about to release the finalized literacy plan from the Illinois Com- Comprehensive Literacy Plan Program that they put together. So I guess my question there is, I'm assuming everyone has been paying attention to what's going across the country, what's working, what's not working, and as far as Illinois, because I want to make sure if they give us any direction or mandated, that we're kind of, we feel that we're well aligned here because what I don't want to do is get ahead of ourselves, we approve something and all of a sudden we find out something else is mandated. Do you want to take that?
Certainly. So the the two parts of what you're asking are married together pretty nicely because what's happening in the world of literacy, the literacy plan that's potentially coming down from the state addresses all of the things that are being discussed across the country in terms of what's happening with literacy. And what 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 I have found in my review of the literacy plan from the state is it is very much in line with the philosophy that we have had for a very long time as a district and that we espouse in terms of what good literacy instruction includes. And to that, I mean, we have already had a focus on phonics and and letter sound relationships and phonemic awareness instruction. We have already made sure that we can look at avenues that students feel like they can identify with the topics, texts, writing opportunities, so that there's a there's a diversity and equity piece that's a regular part embedded in our literacy instruction. That's very much a part of that literacy plan as well. Some of where the the conversations across the nation are, where people are in terms of pretty particular viewpoints on what's good for literacy. We take a little bit more of a centrist approach to that, that there isn't just one side or the other. There's a research on both ends and evidence based practices on both ends. And so here's what we, what this program supports that we know to be good about literacy instruction. We need to fine tune a couple of things about what we've done before. So when we pull small groups in the past, maybe we prompted a little bit too much. That's sort of what is one of the like controversial topics, like how much queuing do you give to students? We maybe have done that more readily than having the student focus first on the word piece. So we have work as a district to do to to grow in, I mean, you know, but it's that's not different than what we thought. We also think sitting across the table and watching student behaviors as they're growing in literacy tells us a lot about kids. And we've always believed that the word level and the way that students receive language and form language happens before you can really hit the ground running with with comprehension. So we have growth to do in terms of what the discussions are in the world of literacy. But in in the review of that literacy plan from the state, it is is very much in line with what we think. Specific targeted instruction with whole groups, small group, word level instruction. Those are things that we believed in and tried to include in our literacy for a long time. So Mr. Rising, to your question, did we have people involved that are aware of and in the know about some of that? You betcha, because some of it is because it's it's what we believe in. And some of it is because they want to do things well and write by kids as well. We'll, we'll keep growing on that journey for sure.
Yeah, and yeah, I have no doubt that all of you at the table and that were working through this, you had the best intentions of our kids and you know our district pretty well, that our district likes setting higher standards, right? That wanted not just align with what's out there, we want to go to the next level. And kudos to you, Ms. Bukowski, for for the results you got. But slide, what was it, the slide five that you had, the Savvas My Literacy that's broken down? And I'm just going to be totally talk on layman's terms now. My two kids were six years apart, right? So my younger daughter, who was in elementary school all the way through oh eight, I feel had a much different experience when it comes to ELA than my daughter that didn't get into elementary school until oh nine. And I guess where I'm going with that and why I'm asking is, I hope with some of this, and again, I don't think there is a right or wrong, I I'm glad we're kind of taking a centrist approach. But I just feel like there was a more of a focus on the basics, on the phonics, on with my younger daughter, more so than there was with my, with my older daughter than there was with my younger daughter. So is that, are we all kind of, are we kind of getting back to some of those basics that maybe we kind of moved away from? Is that a fair question?
It's certainly a fair question. And and to to your question about are we, are we jumping into this too soon? You know, this, this is only one piece of the program. This is the reading routines companion and it's practices grounded in the science of reading. This is all the foundational skills. So the the parts that you're referencing of literacy development, that is more about getting students familiar with decoding and encoding words, that's not only in this, it's in a weekly and daily basis, oops, in the teacher manual as well.
After spelling tests?
Well, we, I, there is, there is a word level spelling component in here. And our goal with that would be that students can transfer that spell. So that's a great question too. What we want, what it does with spelling in this program is teaches students patterns, routines and irregularities with letters and sounds. And then ultimately, the goal is that they transfer it to the words that they didn't necessarily work on just for that week.
And it also comes with reading a lot too.
Yes, yes, it does.
All right, thank you so much.
Great questions. Thank you.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you. Your energy is contagious. I think that's, that's what we pick up on and we love to see. How long have we had the current curriculum?
So when Common Course Standards came out about 12 years ago, publishers were at the same time and it was as new to them as it was to districts. So at the time, 12 years ago, we wrote our our current curriculum in house. And it is a collection of texts that we use for close reading, mostly whole group, shared reading experiences. And we wrote lessons to go along with that. The original writing was 12 years ago. Like I said, they have been revised and tweaked. And then we also tandemly wrote an in-house writing, writing piece that matched the reading piece. We did have some word study, so some phonics, some foundational skills. That was a separate purchase, so we did purchase some items to help support that. Most of that was done, I would say, initially getting our hands on all of those materials between 12 to, or 10, 12 to 10 years ago. And then we have put in small other parts since then. Our primary focus in the last six or seven years has really been about instructional practice. We had good stuff, but we were trying to move teachers along again in when you're sitting across the table from a student, what are you learning about what they need next? So we've, we've spent most of our time in the last six years on instructional practice and not as much in terms of looking and pursuing a new resource.
Yeah, okay, so that makes a lot more sense as to why this being a one stop shop is so attractive and also a better use of your time and energy and allows you to do all the other deeper diving questions, higher, higher thinking questions that you want to have with the students. That makes a lot of sense. Is that really the reason why that it's enhancing engagement? Would you say that resource availability, it being kind of in one place?
I think that's the ease for the teachers. I think what really engages the students is the stories, the different types of stories and the diversity in the stories. I think a lot of students are excited to see themselves in the different types of texts that are in these five units that we have in fourth grade. This unit that we're currently on is diversity. And we're not just talking about, you know, cultural diversity or, you know, different types of diversity. We're also talking about cognitive diversity. And that's where we got on the conversation of students with autism or students that are blind. And that's where we got on the topic of Helen Keller. And students are asking these profound questions and we're really having a great conversation. And what we came to the conclusion is knowledge is power. And so if we know more about something, we're more inclusive and we're more, you know, wanting to, you know, be empathetic to whatever someone is going through, whatever that may be. And so the book that I'm going to read tomorrow is Just Ask. And it's a story about, you know, students just asking students about their different cultures, about their different holidays, about their different, maybe their disability, you know, and 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 understanding the differences. And knowledge is going to help us understand and be compassionate and and really kind of drive those relationships and inclusivity.
That's great. I mean, I love hearing that. Do the students interact with this program? Like I know there's a good digital component, so are you, since students weren't part of the pilot, are teachers rely, how are teachers getting feedback from students aside from their performance? I mean, how are you comparing based on a previous year where you're using the other program versus the piloting of this program?
I mean, I only used the other curriculum for two years. And one of those was coming out of COVID, they had, that was their first year ever being at school. So I think that was a big adjustment too. But I have noticed just having a physical copy of the story because in the previous curriculum that the majority of my school is using right now, the students don't have the story in front of them. And so for me, having them have it in front of them and them to be able to even recognize what word I am reading out loud to them is just sparking so much more interest in reading. I took a poll in the beginning of the year, just raise your hand if you like to read. Less than half of my class raised their hand. If you were to walk in my classroom tomorrow and ask them the same thing, I would say 95% of my kids will raise their hand. And I think that has largely to do with the fact that these stories are engaging, they're interesting. They also have guided reading books for us to use during guided reading and decodables that match up to the stories that we're reading. So if I'm reading a non, nonfiction text as a whole group, then when we do a small group, maybe with three or four kids, they're also reading a nonfiction story that can connect, which they are then making those connections between the stories and they're also making it across subjects as well.
So it's accessible and they can, they they can interact with it? And that's the individual component that you're referring to? And then they could go deeper if they wanted to?
Yes.
With the, you mentioned with the ELL student?
Yes.
Students being able to go deeper or enhance their understanding of a passage or a write-up?
Yes, absolutely. And they have a whole online digital library that also parents of my students can access as well. And so they can sit at home and read the story with their students if they want to. Because maybe your child might come home and say, oh, I read this really cool book. And you're trying to find it at the library or you're trying to find it online, you can't. Then they can go to their Savvas My View platform through our Google Classroom.
Oh, awesome. I wish I had this program. This sounds amazing. I have nothing else to say. President, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Jane.
Well, I do want to start by just honestly reiterating what we've all been saying. I want to thank you for all the work you guys have put into finding this amazing program. The honestly, the enthusiasm, the excitement, it is really contagious. And I absolutely love hearing the results that are already happening with students and the fact that it is maybe igniting that love of learning with them. Because obviously, we want them to, we want them to be engaged, we want them to actually love what they're learning. You guys love what you're teaching, so thank you for all that you always do, honestly. I only have one question. You did kind of just mention at the beginning very quickly, the PA curriculum. Is it going to be wrapped up in my view as well?
That'll be, that will be next steps work.
Okay.
So currently, the Project Arrow curriculum is written around the same themes that exist in our current English Language Arts curriculum. So that will be next steps work. We, we.
Using that, that though as a base, my view?
Well, and we're also embarking on Project Arrow audit right now that will give us some additional information.
Okay.
So ideally, we still want them to be connected
Yeah.
with providing the right amount of rigor to our students who are in the program for Project Arrow.
Right.
But initially, what we have currently written will be different.
Okay.
But still equally, equally as impactful. It allows for them to still scaffold learning up and down for those students. But we'll have some work to do in that arena and the audit will probably give us some good information to help with that too.
Okay, no, that's excellent. Thank you guys so much. And honestly, I kind of, I agree with Ms. Jane, I wish I had a program like that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. The excitement, as everyone has already indicated, is definitely palpable. So love seeing that energy. Just a couple of quick comments that I had. I love the conversation, Ms. Gresher, that you had, just talking about the interaction between students and as well, Ms. Lokowski. I'm sorry, not between students, but between staff and just the sharing of ideas. That is so wonderful to see that creativity and not just keep it, you know, not siloed, but making sure that we're sharing that, that can be of use for other classrooms. So I really love that. And Ms. Gresher, you mentioned, I love how you linked, and you talked about it again at the end, but when you spoke, you talked about diversity in Helen Keller. And that is so wonderful to help us all understand the diversity is just, it's not black and white and, you know, not narrow, but it's just so critical. I mean, all of us, Helen Keller, I think for many of us, just spoke to us, you know, as we were younger and learning about, learning about her. So having a chance for students now to learn and linking that the way you did is really, really nice. So I applaud you for, all of you, for finding text and literacy components that can broaden our students' desire and excitement to learn. I also love the text, that textile interaction. I really love that because, and hearing students, you know, I remember when we used to be able to go to the Scholastic Book Fairs. I mean, it's really different than just trying to go through digitally and let me figure out what books. We like to take books home. So just providing that interaction for students is really, is really critical. I did just have one question. If maybe you can share and illuminate a little bit how we see this particular curriculum moving in and forward for our middle school as our students progress into middle school? Any, how do you see that growth and why is it going to be so enhanced their growth as they move into middle school?
Thank you. I think one of the best pieces that we'll be able to use as we articulate with our middle school colleagues is this, the very clear scope and sequence. It is broken down very clearly to show grade level by grade level, what was emphasized, where mastery was expected, where development was still occurring. I think as an initial step, the middle school just being able to take a look at where were things introduced and where were they mastered and where are they still growing? I do know the middle school is in the process of also taking a look at what they're utilizing for English Language Arts. And Dr. Chisholm and myself work closely together. So her group, this year is more of that beginning portion of regulation. The other brief point that I'll make, one of our fifth grade teachers referenced that almost all of Unit One in fifth grade is informational text. And we, classroom teachers sometimes lean on fiction because it does bring a lot of joy in many cases. So what she has found is that the rigor has really stepped up with her fifth graders. She has also noticed an alignment between what it asks them to do with the text in fifth grade, and this is not exclusive to fifth grade, and what they do on IAR, our state testing, and I Ready, going back to the text for evidence, closely reading. So those skills will all blend into middle school. But we haven't really begun that conversation of including middle school with this yet. But I think it will be a very easy entry point, especially in terms of the work that they're trying to do with any revisions that they may want to do. We will stay connected for sure.
Thank you. And just the last comment, and I just wanted to share this both with you and Dr. Tally. Just, I saw as we talked about next steps and different ways that students, that teachers will begin to have their articulation opportunities. Just a little wondering for those staff that aren't able to do maybe summer sessions, but we will ensure that all of our staff has accessible means to garner that articulation. That'll be so critical if we're going to begin it next August.
Yes, and our elementary group of principals with Laura Rosenbloom, we've already had conversations about what a significant priority this will be for those critical moments of professional development we have on a weekly basis next year. You know, I think we will all be elbow deep in ELA, which would, I would certainly be a fan of. So that's, that is certainly our goal. And continuing to work with Savis because they bring a level of expertise as far as training, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Lee. Dr. Lee, Dr. Lee is going to provide us a presentation on the curriculum approval process.
Good evening, Vice President, members of the board, members of the board, members of the board. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight on our curriculum review update. This review presentation actually looks at two board policies. Board Policy 6210, which really focuses on instructional materials. And then Board Policy 640, which really delves into some of the deeper details that I'm going to outline in our curriculum review process. It also takes a look at through our strategic plan, Priority One, specifically Objective Two, where we are looking at curriculum through the lens of student achievement, equity, student engagement. So tonight, you'll be able to hopefully hear and see the details throughout the review process. In January of 2023, almost a year to the date of today, this board received an update and actually a review of the curriculum in a workshop and both later that evening is a discussion point when you were actually looking at a change in policy with looking at, including the word primary to actually take a look at primary materials. And tonight, we really wanted to focus and provide an update to that discussion. And also, at the end of this, share an updated timeline in which this presentation will be part of an annual presentation to the board and where a recommendation for that will come in the calendar. In many ways, I'm really excited that you just heard the presentation before this because, one, like you said, that, that energy, that enthusiasm is amazing. To hear from the experts, for them to talk about what their experience was like is just invigorating. The other piece that I'm really excited that, even though I begged to go first because of the enthusiasm factor. But the other reason I'm really excited is because you will hear me refer to that presentation several times throughout my presentation because what they have done and what they have followed is exemplary, but there's also a process that they followed. And really, I want to dig into the details of what that process looks like across our district, across the levels, so that we are consistent in our approach of what curriculum review looks like when we bring it to the board. What are the pieces that are brought to the board? What are things that are for approval? What does it look like when we don't get into those details? And so I'll be using that presentation as an example, some of the points that you heard of some of the things that are embedded in this process. So for tonight, we're going to go through that process. I'll share a little bit about what that curriculum calendar looks like. Go into a couple of details about some current and upcoming reviews and how some of those are not going to be brought to the board based on what that review looks like. And we'll talk a little bit about that. We'll do that at the three levels, elementary, middle, and high. And then any questions that you may have at the end of this. So what's up there is really just this review process. And it's important that it is cyclical in nature. And why is that? Well, it's important that when we're looking at anything, that there's always a accountability aspect to what we're doing. We may start with this review needs assessment, which I'll go into a little bit finer detail in just a moment, but we also want to come back to that. I'll start right now, as you heard Joan talk about it, it had been 12 years since we had looked at ELA with our Common Core, which now Illinois looks at as the Illinois Learning Standards. So a review was needed and that needs assessment was done. And so whether it be a 12-year process, whether it be four years, there is not going to be a time delineation that you see in this diagram of what that process looks like. But that, once we want to start it, based on the calendar that I'll show you, it's important that we have flexibility in that. You'll also hear, you know, you heard them talk about, actually, I think one of the board members asked a question about, well, what happens if they come out with new standards? Well, that's actually happened with our social science. They came out with the actual standards for those in 2019, but they've updated it. So you'll hear me talk a little bit later on our calendar, how we, where we had it in our calendar review process, but because they fine tuned some of those just recently, we've decided to move it up. So I think this process is not perfect, but it allows for that flexibility. And it really allows for us to demonstrate, I think, to not only the board, but our public that we do have a strategic piece in place here for how we're regularly looking at what we put in front of our students. That being said, I want to go through each one of those pieces a little bit that was just shown in that diagram to you. So I'll first start with that review needs assessment piece. And, you know, some of those pieces, obviously, you know, you're going to see straight from Objective Two that I just referenced in the strategic plan about student achievement, equity, student engagement. All of that is part of that first piece of that review. I always think about it as sort of just looking at your ROI. What's our return on investment? Not just from a financial standpoint, but an actual instructional standpoint. And that's really where that student achievement piece comes in. It's important, and again, here I go, somebody's going to keep a tab on how much I referenced that presentation, but you heard one of the teachers who was so excited about the students seeing themselves in the curriculum. Those are things that if students are not seeing themselves, that that engagement does not occur. She referenced some of the, this one data point of scores and how that increased and how our students have had that love of reading. Again, that review prior to that was showing that maybe some of her students didn't. And so having an opportunity to go through that review, go through that needs assessments really says, okay, we need to start this first part of the process of what we're going to be doing. The second part is the design and development. If there is a curriculum redesign that may involve new curriculum writing, then, you know, normally that's going to be done by teachers in-house. You heard them talk about how when they first did the EL Common Core piece, that that was done in-house. That was a curriculum write that where we worked with our experts, our teachers, for them to do curriculum writing, which normally happens over the summer outside of the school day for that to occur. There are times of things that I'll be outlining later on that are in this design and development process that may not need a rewrite. Or they may just need a supplemental material review. We know that the board is going to head on this agenda earlier to that where you approved a pilot for supplemental materials at the middle school level. So that design and develop piece of it may not also always result in content curation of different curriculum materials. It has to be flexible because regardless if we're not trying to restart, maybe there's some tweaks, it's important to still take our staff through this process and that's what we want to do. The third piece is the pilot and the implementation piece. This is, this is the fun part. This is where you heard that enthusiasm, where you actually get to do some action research that's done in the classroom. You know, this is the piece where I know our student board member, I remember she made a comment last year about where they were piloting a new book in the curriculum process. And I think she's talked about President Donahue as her substitute teacher that day as well, I think. And just the excitement that she had, not only because they were piloting a book, but that they also asked for feedback from the students. And so that pilot process is key. We hope by, once we get to a pilot piece, because that's the piece that's brought to the board. That's the piece where we're really asking the board to, one, we want to share what's been done already. We don't want to really come at the end and not have the board a part of that, but we want to be able to take a moment to just say, here's where we're at so far. What do you think, are we headed in the right direction? And then if we are, then let's start with the pilot. Because, you know, you heard the excitement. It's one thing to pilot and have those teachers excited about what they're doing. We want to set them up that we know that we're on a path to where this potentially can ultimately be approved. And so that review and that design development, all those pieces are going to be extremely important in that. And then finally, is just that ongoing review process. This is probably one of the, really the most important pieces out of all four of them because if there's not a feedback loop that's created, then you heard them talk about that, Joan talked about the book and she said, it's great that we have it, but if we don't have strong PD, if we don't have opportunities for teachers to continue to give feedback, we are not going to be able to implement this with fidelity and making sure that everyone is experiencing that same type of enthusiasm for what they're going to be teaching. And you're going to see some of the same type of lenses in the review process that you saw in the beginning. Student achievement, equity, student engagement. Those are purposeful because we want that at the beginning and at the end so that that completes the cycle so that two years, five years down the line, if we're at that piece where that feedback from teachers has changed and we're only able to hear that feedback, if we have that feedback loop established, then we want to be able to enter the process again and start to take a look at it. So I've mentioned a couple of times just the curriculum calendar. Right now, our curriculum calendar, including this year, has gone out four years. And this is just a sample of what this looks like. This is in-house, this is what the curriculum instruction team really operate by. When we are having our meetings and we're talking about curriculum and we're talking about where we're at, we are always referencing this calendar to have discussions. This is not a static document, this is dynamic for us to constantly make changes as we need to. You'll see in this sample, some of the steps that we're actually taking tonight. Those steps have been in there for quite some time. Some of those steps were moved up, some of them were moved back. The whole idea here is that we have a planning tool so that we know, hey, sometime in the next three or four years, we're going to be taking a look at this. What do we need to start doing right now to prepare leaders in the building, our staff? What questions do we need to be asking so that when we get to that point, we're able to move on that? So what does this look like in terms of some of the actual pieces that we're looking at? Not only in this current year, but next year? I'm just going to highlight a couple of things from here. One of them, you already heard Joan talk about, the Project Arrow audit. We are currently finalizing some recommendations that we want to be able to take a look at in which we're looking at that entire program. You know, when we look at PE and any equipment refresh, what are some things that we want to start to do in some of those PE spaces at the elementary level where we know that it's time to start taking a look at some of that equipment? Again, when you think of equipment, you may not think right away of, well, you know, questions and creation and all of those things. But it's important that it's part of the process and it fits in that review, that design, that pilot and all of those. So we want to be able to do that with the equipment as well. We want to be able to, you know, pilot a piece of equipment maybe in one elementary school before we decide to expand it out to several other schools. At the middle school level, again, just a sample, if I had to highlight something, I'd probably really highlight that World Language High School credit. This is an exciting piece of, that falls under our curriculum review process where we, again, looking at that cyclical process and doing that review, we know that beginning in the 2024-25 school year, we are going to start offering high school credit at the middle school. at the middle school level for the world language curriculum that currently exists, that just also happens to be the, the exact same curriculum that's taught at the high school. So, it's really about the, the credit process that they are achieving there. But again, making sure that it falls under this curriculum review process, because it's very important that we're doing those things together. At the high school level, you're going to, to see a little bit more, and that's because just the, the amount of courses that are offered, and, and some of the content that's offered under each of those courses. Some things that I can definitely highlight, you'll see the senior inquiry. That was brought to the board most recently. That's a brand-new course that was recently approved by this board. And that fell under, our Dr. Purcell, our Director of High School Curriculum, talked, you may remember in his presentation, he talked through the points of our curriculum review process, without mentioning, mentioning it, so to speak, but going through every single step of what that looked like in terms of senior inquiry. I believe even our student board member even talked about her experience with that as well, and what that looked like. I think drafting and design, I would bring attention to. We are currently looking at the textbook for that, and potential having the DCs review that. Also, AP macro and micro, we're also looking at a textbook for that. And all of those things continue to go through this curriculum review process. So, one of the things that I've mentioned at the beginning of this presentation is, this is something that we want to continue to do on an annual basis. Our, the curriculum directors are always coming up here, and that is part of board policy to continue to do that. One of the things that we like to expand is really just be able to report out on pieces of this review process. And while we're in January here, and it's winter time, we think that moving this presentation possibly to a summer piece could help with what's coming up in the fall, so that it fits in a, in a more sequential timeline, not just for us, but also for the board, when we're thinking about things that are coming up for that entire school year. So that would be one change that we would be making, just to the timing of this presentation, just to help what we think might fit better along with this curriculum review process. With that, I'll take any questions and/or comments.
I, I love this presentation. Last year, when it was presented, it just provided a structure for me to understand how this process works. And now, every year, just getting to hear what we're doing, it, it just, there's a flow to it, and I, and I understand how the process works, and, thank you. It, it's just, it's illuminating and very informative. And I agree with the suggestion you made about moving it to the summer. I think that seems like the right spot, or right timing for this presentation. So, thank you. No questions.
I basically just agree with everything Ms. Jean just said, but, and, for the record, your presentation did nicely complement the one before you, so.
Yeah, I don't know about the enthusiasm.
Don't feel it. I think it's internal right now. The enthusiasm is just internal at the moment. But no, I, I do agree, and I do really appreciate the fact that this is a very big task, because a lot of our curriculum is a bit older and dated, and it's a lot to go over in the next few. So, I just really appreciate the effort you guys, you know, everybody is putting in, the, the entire district's really for this. And I'm very excited to see, you know, all of the high school things that are being looked at. Obviously, all of it, but selfishly, just for my children, the high school ones. But, no, I don't have any questions either. I'm just, I'm really excited to kind of see. And I do agree that moving it to the summer does make a lot of sense.
Thank you. Mr. Rising?
So, thank you for this. It kind of better paints a picture for me of how we're evaluating this, and when we're evaluating it. You're around long enough, you see a lot of things. You know, the, the Common Core state standards, when they were first put in place, the premise of that was an amazing premise. I mean, it, it was meant so that if a kid was in Tennessee and moved to the state of Washington in fourth grade, they should essentially be learning the same stuff in Tennessee that they are in the state of Washington. It was a wonderful premise. Standards have been around in education forever. The problem is, is that the states all wanted their own standards. And here we are. And, and why we have to evaluate things constantly. You know, we, we've got one goal as a district is to educate our students. You know, I mean, we could make the argument, keep them safe too, but to educate our students. So I'm glad that we're looking at curriculum, but then it makes me ask other questions. Does that mean, if my kids live in the boundaries of Niqua, and I move my family in 10th grade to Matia, are they going to be learning the same thing? You know, and, and that's where my bigger concern lies, that we aren't operating in silos. So I think by looking at the curriculum, standardizing the curriculum, that's a good thing. I think when we start creating too many opportunities for supplemental material, then we're outside of doing this in a fiduciary, a fidelity type of way, because now we're making the boundaries a lot wider. So, I guess my question there is, as we're evaluating some of this, are we ensuring that? Because hopefully, when we look at these things, we're not only meeting the state standards, which we have to by law, but we're also looking at what is best for our district. Like, what, what are our expectations? Are, are we going to allow, allowing to have our kids excel once they get to the SAT, or whatever it is? You know, once they get through their, their K-12? So, I guess my bigger question, while this is wonderful, is what are we doing to ensure that that happens?
I will first say that, to answer your question about if they're at a, moving from one school to another school, yes, they, they are learning the same core pieces of the curriculum. When we are updating that curriculum, it's similar to what happens when you update a road. The road, the road is the same. There are times where it's outdated, and we need to, to, to take a look at it. Sometimes we may have to rebuild the whole road, we may have to fill in, but we want that road to be the same. What some of the, the differences can be is, our teachers are professionals and are amazing at what they do. And on, just like when you have a road, you have different cars on that road, and how everyone is going to the exact same spot. They should be traveling at the same speed, monitoring the speed limit, and all getting there at the same time, but they may have different vehicles to get there. And that's really where that teacher has the autonomy, you know, to have that artist piece of what they are doing, to, whether it be through a supplemental material that they may be introducing, whether it be through, you know, you get some teachers who want to dress up for a unit, just to invite more student engagement. All of those pieces, we don't want to take away from the teachers. We want to ensure, though, that they're all in that same road. They all have the platform in which they can operate, so that no matter which school that student is going to, they are at, learning the exact same material, while also experiencing different teachers, just like they would when they go on to a secondary, you know, experience, whether that be in college, whether that be in career, where they're meeting with other people.
And that's a fair response, and I thank you for that analogy. It was a great analogy. And, again, I think it just goes to the point, as long as we're setting our curriculum expectations high enough, that our kids should be all getting a great education with little tweaks here and there, like you said. So, thanks.
Mr. Carubis?
Yeah, you're going to have to get your energy level up, as I approach nine o'clock. That'd be more helpful. No, the, great presentation. I, I, the, this is a very important topic, especially being a non educator. I'm glad, over the course of my volunteerism here, to see that we've moved to this, because it really provides the 30,000-foot view on what is happening. You know, historically, over many years, the board would just get an instructional material piece, or one curriculum item. And there really wasn't too much rhyme or reason to it, or know what was coming up, or know what to expect when. So, this takes a lot of that guesswork out. So, when I'm no longer on the board, the school should definitely keep providing future boards with this material. Thanks.
Ms. Vostick?
Thank you for this. I really appreciate the orderly cycle of things. I do have one question for clarification, because I was one of those heartbroken parents to receive the World Language Credit email, to discover my middle school student doesn't qualify, because it won't start till later. But I am delighted that we're doing it. It's starting in '25, '26, or '24, '25?
Yeah, great. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify that. Yeah, so it will be the cred, they'll be in the courses, but the, the first ones who will get credit will be for that following year. So that, I'll let Dr. Tally also speak.
It takes two years. Therefore, students entering oral language this year, coming up, and then the second year is when they'll get the credit.
Thank you for that. I'm glad that we're doing it.
Have to start somewhere.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Lee, thank you so much. I think for me, the two slides that were so enlightening for me were Slide 3 and Slide 4. That, Slide 3, just seeing the continual process and the continual motion is, was, is so important, and to understand the process, and regardless of what level, that that process is continuing to occur across each of our three levels, that there's student feedback, is really, really important. And one of the things that I really appreciate from the prior presentation is that opportunity to see that student achievement level. So, I'm certain that that can occur through everything, but that was really valuable, just so you know, when you have an opportunity to share with each of the assistant superintendents as, as we, as we go forward. And then, Slide 4, again, just really seeing each particular level and that broken out, that was really enlightening for me. And, Slide 8, I just had a very quick question. And there was the dual credit, and in parentheses, new, on Slide 8, on the high school level, under current. Where it had dual cr, is, does that mean, was that related to the presentation you gave us previously, as we're looking at new, or the, that we had previously?
Under fashion for high school?
No, it just has, it had, in the, it has dual credit new, under English 4?
Oh.
I wasn't sure what that was.
Yeah, so any times we're possibly looking at new dual credit courses. So we're always trying to really grab those.
Okay, thank you. I thought that may have related to that presentation we had. Okay, thank you so much. That's all that I had.
Yeah, I just really want to thank, I have one of the best teams in, in this district, our CNI team. They do amazing work. And then, kudos to Dr. Purcell, even for the suggestion about the summer move, so, because he's up here a lot, so. He's got more enthusiasm, so. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Now for legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. I did send a email, just sharing the opportunity that we had to meet with IASB, with the large unit, member districts. And there were a couple of things that I did just want to highlight, just a second. So, COSPA's coming up, and as you well know, one of the things that we had hoped, and we had the little bit of discussion, is an opportunity to share amongst different large member units. They're not officially going to do anything, so we will try to find an opportunity. They're going to share, give us an idea of this, districts that are going to attend from Illinois, and we'll try to see informally if we can have an opportunity to get together. Spring divisional meeting's coming up, hopefully everyone saw that. Please let Michelle know if you're going to have a chance to attend. One thing that was really interesting that they mentioned is that there was an advocacy opportunity in DC last year, and they took a variety of large member districts. And so, I would love to see, hopefully, us be able to be a part of that. So, I've asked for information, and as that gets back to myself or Lori, probably will get to Lori, I'm certain she'll send out, so that if anyone, you know, if we want to have an opportunity to consider that type of advocacy. And then, I just wanted to say thank you, and this is really probably on behalf of Lori. One of the things that, you know, we have an opportunity to, to receive recognition at some of the divisional meetings for the work that we do, and I just, on, on behalf of Lori, just say thank you so much for, often, Member Carubis will say, you know, talk about our ability to work together. And it is not happening everywhere, and that was mentioned during this meeting. So I just say thank you to all of us on, and to all of you for what we do on behalf of the stakeholders of, of our district, and for our parents, and for our students, and for everyone here. So thank you so much for being willing to, to serve and to work together in, in a manner that hopefully is beneficial for our, our district. And with that?
I've got one thing. I had that IASB advisory meeting with the State Board of Education today. I'll provide you all of my notes by the end of this week. So, just wanted to let you know. And, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. All in favor?